Be ready.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll take a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the county superintendent, the board attorney, and Cablevision of Warwick. And posted in the administration building, copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, town library, and all district schools. Due to the public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, as declared in Executive Order 103 and as permitted by Assembly Bill 3850, the board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting a virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district website. Very much. We very much welcome input from the public. Because this is a virtual meeting, public comment will be handled as follows. During the meeting, prior to the public comment, instructions will be displayed on how to join the meeting by phone. Roll call, Mrs. Francisca.
This is Romeo.
I'm here. And before you go on, Mr. Winston, I'm hearing from community members that there's no audio on the livestream. They can see us, but they can't hear us. Sorry, Barbara.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm on it.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Conklin.
Here.
Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz. Mr. Ofchinsky.
Here.
Mr. Stillman. Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna need to go into executive session at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, we have to do this resolution first, is that where I am?
Yes, it's not gonna be a hip of parent appeal, the parent called today and declined to attend tonight's appeal. We do have a hip to discuss that's on the agenda in its normal place. So we can do that and also can discuss other pressures.
Andy, we need to do the motion though because of the the meeting being a virtual meeting. Do we have to do that again?
You should do that again.
Okay, I need I need a motion for that. Will somebody do that?
I make a motion to go into executive session at the beginning of the meeting.
No, not that.
I move to accept the resolution to to endorse a virtual meeting.
Do you see it there? I think it has, I'll read it.
Oh, I see, sorry.
Okay, I know, I missed it. Be it resolved, yeah, you could read it, go ahead.
Okay, be it resolved that the West Milford Township Board of Education hereby approves the suspension of its normal meeting procedures pursuant to bylaw 131 and authorizes this meeting to be conducted as a virtual meeting as described in the statement of public notice due to the public health emergency declared in Executive Order 103 and as permitted by Assembly Bill 3850.
Do I need a second for that?
Second.
Barbara, it says roll call here.
Yeah. Mrs. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino. Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman. Mr. Ofchinsky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes, now we need the motion for executive session. Terry, you want to move that one?
Okay, I'm at, I don't know what time it is, let's see.
7:09.
Okay, at 7:09, I move that we move into executive session for the purpose of HIB and personnel matters.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, we're gonna go into executive session and we should be returning in approximately 30 minutes.
Yeah, probably 20 minutes, Linda, I think. But we'll log off this and I sent you an email about 10:00 this morning with another executive session. So you can log off this and log on to that for the executive session.
Thank you.
Do we need to return, okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order and Mrs. Francisco, please do the roll call.
Mr. Conklin. Mrs. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Stillman. There you are. Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yeah.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mr. Ofchinsky.
Here.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here. Dr. Anamon, you want to start with your report?
Hi, yes, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our main meeting. Just wanted to update the board on a couple things. We did start something called a restart committee. We opened this up, we sent a notice out maybe a few weeks ago regarding this. I think it's important to get ahead of the restarting of school. On the one hand, we're very busy working with our administrators, our teachers to finish the 2019-20 school year. We're still in the middle of the fourth market period, we have three and a half weeks of school left. We have grades entered into our, into real timing and end this year. But then also, we have to have one eye looking forward towards the start of next year. So we started a, we created a restart committee. I split it into two subgroups. One subgroup is going to be led by Mr. Novak. We have two board members in that subcommittee, Courtney Stevenson and Terry Dwyer, as well as administrators, teachers, and parents. They're gonna focus on what happens if schools are not allowed to reopen in September. So in other words, if we continue with our distance learning in the fall, what changes do we need to make? We know there's a lot of things that are working, but we also notice some things that aren't working or some things that we can do better. So Mr. Novak's gonna focus on that piece and it could be an issue with Chromebooks, it could be an issue with technology or communication or pedagogy. It could be a lot of things. So they're gonna look at every which way to make the virtual instruction better for September if schools are not allowed to reopen. The second subgroup, I'll chair that and I'm working with the board with Linda Van Dyke and Kate Romeo, they're helping out as well. What if we are allowed to open schools in September? What do our schools look like? And it most likely will not look like a regular school setting, it's gonna be different. We are awaiting some additional guidance from the department. But in the, with, absent that, we're gonna press forward to look at potentially a split schedule where not every student is in school every day or perhaps are in for a portion of a day. We're not sure how that's gonna look. You could have one-way hallways and stairwells in each school. You could have students taking health the first market period instead of changing for phys ed class. You could see no chorus classes because we know that there is some issues with students singing in close quarters. We'll be looking at a lot of different ways, transportation could be an issue. How do we thin out our buses going to and from school? Because we don't want too many kids on the bus at the same time. How do we get the kids into school and out of school? You could have students taking health the first market period instead of changing for late class. It's a delay, Barbara. So these are all little things we're looking at. Some of the most recent guidance coming out now is they're telling you to avoid the three Cs, which are low spaces, crowded places, and close contact settings. So we're working with the department, with our board, with our administrators and teachers to get this message out and to really see what we can do differently for September.
Alex, just a second, Terry. Ray did have a question while you were speaking and then I think.
I was getting some feedback for a second, I'm sorry, Ray. Go ahead. Avoid the three Cs.
Yeah, I'm hearing doubles.
Yeah, it's coming in twice, it's saying and then it's like a five-second delay, it's saying it again. Robert, could you look into that? I don't know if you're hearing it as well.
Not audible on our side, but I'll check it.
I think everybody has to mute also because I think it's coming from some of us.
Okay, so if you guys could put your computers on mute and then we'll just unmute it when you want to speak, that would be, that might be helpful as well.
Okay, Terry, go ahead.
You know, you mentioned the chorus. But what about chemistry labs and biology labs where kids are working together? And the band, the band kids, what, you know, is that all gonna be taken into consideration? Because those are very, very close, you know, that's one of the Cs.
Yeah, well, we have a laundry list, I just gave a couple of examples. I mean, you're gonna see the classrooms being seated, you know, sometimes the elementary schools, they have the small groups with a desk all square off and face each other. You may see students in old-fashioned desks and rows with everybody facing this same direction.
And biology labs where kids are working together.
Yeah, so we're looking at everything. I'm just giving you a small look into what we could be focusing on, but we'll get to everything. And like I said, we're expecting some additional guidance from the department. So that should be helpful as well. So, you know, the committee should, these ideas will probably go through each committee and then we'll have some, a better idea what schools will look like in the fall. Hopefully, we can reopen, but if we don't, we'll have a fallback plan that Mr. Novak's gonna work on.
Thank you, Dr. Anamon. I would just say to the rest of the board, if you have any questions or if you have any suggestions, contact either, you know, Dr. Anamon or Mr. Novak or any one of the board members who are working on it. We'll get the, you know, get the information back to you, you know, as far as we can. We just had our first meeting, I'm not sure, did.
The second meeting, the second group is meeting, I think, this Thursday. Wednesday or Thursday this week, I think Thursday. So Mr. Novak sent out the email already to that group, they should be, they should have it on their calendar. And also, I should not forget to mention that earlier today, we got a message from Governor Murphy that his earlier executive order banning in-person graduations was relaxed, but not until July 6th. So as of right now, we have multiple plans that we're working on, sort of a Plan A, the Plan B, or more accurately, maybe a Plan E, G, and F that now we're up to, I don't even know. But this just came through today, so students can graduate in person using social distancing, no earlier than July 6th, which is a little bit later than we're accustomed to. But it's something that I think our kids will appreciate. And then we're gonna look forward to some more directive guidance from the department. I think Wednesday or Thursday this week, we're getting some more information from Trenton. That should help our planning and we should have something out to the parents by the end of the week for our Plan A or Plan B. And what we're gonna do, should this, should we be allowed to have an in-person graduation. Nicole?
Are we gonna be looking at that for both eighth grade and high school? Or are you just focusing on the seniors?
We're looking at 12th, 8th, 6th, and 5th. You know, those little kids, you know, the fifth and sixth graders need to have some sort of moving up ceremony. It may not be seven o'clock at night like the high school is, it may be during a more traditional elementary time, you know, 9:00, 9:30 in the morning, something along those lines. But we're looking to have something for everybody. Not exactly sure what it's gonna look like yet. And sooner is better than later. I know the Governor Murphy said after July 6th, but we don't really want to go too deep into July. We want to do it as quickly as we can, as close to July 6th as we can. This way, it doesn't stretch on for too long. So once that gets done, we'll have the 2019-20 school year behind us and we could put all of our attention towards.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Novak, your report.
Okay. Before, yes, thank you for, Robert, for pulling that up. But before I get into the, the science results, I just wanted to talk about the other item on the, on the agenda for education. This is the conversation that began at Education Committee last week, where I presented an overview of our plans and goals for our summer curriculum writing and how that might take a different look this year, considering a number of factors. Prior to, prior to the health closure and what we're dealing with now, we had already sustained a pretty significant cut in state aid and we've had been dealing to make some fiscal adjustments. So one of the things our supervisors had been working on was the, I guess, tiering by necessity. You know, our putting our high priorities first in terms of what we need to accomplish this summer. And then, you know, some of those other tasks such as getting groups together to discuss standards that we were anticipating new standards being written for, for a number of areas and those standards haven't come through from the state. So there's a couple of projects that we're gonna be, you know, putting on the back burner until those, until those things come through. Now, we also have, you know, in light of the fiscal adjustments, we also have, you know, our, our current progress with, you know, a restart plan. Or I know Dr. Anamon just talked a little bit about that, so I won't go too into detail. But in, in our restart goals, whether it's in, in school and with, with all the, I guess, different types of models we're talking about or distance learning, we're gonna have to take a look at our curriculum and we're gonna have to take a look at our pacing guides so that we are able to meet the needs of our students while understanding and adjusting to the, to the climate that we're gonna be in. So I anticipate at our June meeting, being very specific, that was a request made at the Education Committee that the, the board was interested in a, a specific overview of what are the projects that we are gonna be laying out for work this summer? And then also come back again at the August meeting or the September meeting and, and provide some feedback as to, as to what we accomplished and how we, and how we did. So that was just my, my little announcement for tonight is to stay tuned. We'll have a little bit more detail in June and then you can anticipate a late summer or early fall follow-up in regard to what, what those tasks that we, we accomplished. And I also give updates along the way over the summer, I think that would be, also be appropriate. The next item on the agenda is what the screen share has opened now is that we, I'm gonna give a brief, a brief little overview of our results. We anticipated, you know, the typical board meeting where we could bring in our science supervisor and some of our, some of our testing staff to present our, our results. However, in this climate, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it briefly. We are required by CUSAC to present, to present our test scores as they, as they come out. So tonight, I'm gonna give you the, the brief scores and then when we get back to, you know, back to those meetings in person, we can, we can take a little bit of a closer look at them. Robert, you can go to the next slide. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read the entire slide to you, I just wanted to point out the last bullet point. And that last bullet point is that this is the, the results we're about to share. That is the first time that our students have taken this sort of assessment for science. In the past, it has been called NJASK and that assessment was going, you know, had been in place for a long time and it was based upon the old, the old science standards. So this, this assessment is the first science assessment that is based upon the next generation science standards, which are now called the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science. And I'm just gonna, you know, read that last bullet point note. So it's a significantly different test from the NJ Assessment of Skills and Knowledge, which was the NJASK. The NJSLS for Science are more rigorous standards. And NJSLA Science focuses on the application of science knowledge and skills rather than the memorization of content. So it is considered a widely more, widely more rigorous assessment. And, you know, Robert, you can go to the next slide and we're gonna, I'm gonna talk about the results. So overall, we are, I think overall, we're proud of our, proud of our accomplishments. So what you're looking at there is a breakdown, we've seen this type of slide before when we presented for ELA in math. However, this assessment is, is based on four levels of performance and as opposed to five on, on math and ELA. Level one is our low expectations. Level two is near or met, or near or close to meeting expectations. Level three is meeting expectations and level four is exceeding expectations. So if you take a look, we, we outperformed the state in two of the three, two of the three tested, tested grade levels. If you try to, if you, if you take a look at our numbers, if you add up the, you know, level one, level two, and so forth for the district, it might not come out to 100 because there was some, some rounding, some rounding that took place. But the overall snapshot is that in grades five and eight, we exceeded the state in terms of students meeting or exceeding expectations. And in grade 11, we were, we were slightly, slightly below. The percentage that I have for, in grade five, the state level, the state percentage of students meeting or exceeding level three or an above was 29.2%. And West Milford 5th grade students received a 36.2 in, in levels three or higher. Grade eight, the state percentage was 19.8 for meeting or exceeding expectations. And in West Milford, our 8th graders were 24.4% at those same levels. And at the 11th grade, our student, the state was 27.3% meeting or exceeding expectations. And in West Milford, we were 22, 22.3% of meeting or exceeding expectations. So we're, you know, we're proud of our accomplishments. We have work to do in, you know, all three of our grade level areas. I think our staff would say that they're, they're proud of what they've been doing in terms of implementing the, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Science. It's been a shift for every district, you know, those scores aren't great statewide. And I'm, you know, I'm glad to say that we've, you know, we've outpaced them in most regards. So that is the, that is my presentation of these, of these scores for tonight. And I will have a more detailed release for our website and for the board to see going forward. Now, if there's any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? If not, thank you, Dan. We'll move on to special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco.
We have the minutes from the April 28th meeting, regular and public session, for your consideration.
Yeah, I need, I need a motion and a second for the, to adopt the minutes from the, those meetings.
I'll move to second minutes for the April 28th regular and executive session meetings.
I need a second.
Second.
Ray? Any discussion? If not, voice, voice vote, please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Under President's report, I was just gonna touch upon the graduation message that came out from the governor today. I, I was talking with Dr. Anamon earlier and I just feel like it's gonna be a roller coaster ride for some of these kids because everything keeps changing every day. And, you know, one day, they're gonna get their hopes up and then there's gonna be something or whatever. I mean, the district wants to see something to, to celebrate their accomplishments and I think that, you know, the administration is doing everything it can to, to give them that. And I know that each of you are very supportive of moving forward, whatever we can, in a safe and healthy, healthy celebration for them. And I just, you know, like I said, if there is anything as far as the restart committee or graduation that you have some input that you want to give, please feel free to contact myself or Dr. Anamon or, you know, Mr. Novak, anyone that, at the board office so that, you know, everybody's ideas are taken into account. And I just want to thank everybody for continuing. This has been a tough time and I know that everybody's going through difficult times in their own homes with different, you know, with all these changes and, you know, each day is something different. So I want to thank everybody for, you know, for participating and keeping every, you know, keeping the district, you know, in their, in their busy schedule. Just want to say thank you and I hope you all are staying healthy and that we get into this summer and September will be a. Agenda only, members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full names, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible for their life, they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. I guess we'll give it a few minutes to see if anybody has anything. Do we have anything, Barbara, from anybody in form of a note or anything? If not.
There's been no public.
I'm gonna need a motion to close a public comments.
I'll move to close public comment.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, we're gonna need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. But I think Dr. Anamon has some changes that he needs to make.
Yes, before we do that, just a couple of edits on the agenda. The first one is gonna be on page 10. Personnel, Student Affairs, number eight. This is an unaffiliated personnel contract. At the bottom of the page, there's Donnie's Fuji, there's an asterisk there, it should not be. The asterisk should be removed. Up on page 12, also Personnel, Student Affairs, we have to make some edits to the. Under High School, we have three changes. under High School, we have three changes. Teresa Murphy, Principal's Office, which should be zero days. Increase by five. And on page 23, Operations and Finance, number 38, we are going to, we are going to remove Resolution number 38. And we have replacement, which is a hand carry 38 with some of the numbers that have been changed for the Health Insurance Services effective July 1, 2020. And you should have that via in your email.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Yeah, I moved to adopt the agenda as amended.
Terry, and I needed a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And we'll move on to Education, Mrs. Dwyer.
Okay, I move to approve following agenda item number one. The recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution. Whereas in response to COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has declared a state of emergency and a public health emergency and ordered all schools closed for in-person instruction. And whereas in response to this COVID-19 pandemic, the legislator has revised NJSA 18A 7F-9 to permit the, permit the use of virtual or remote instruction to establish compliance with the 180-day school requirement during a public health emergency, subject to board approval of virtual or remote instructional program. Now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby approves the district's program of virtual or remote instruction to meet the 180-day school requirement, which was previously submitted to the Department of Education on March 11th, 2020, and implemented since the district's closure on March 16th, 2020.
And need a second for that?
Second.
Nicole? Any discussion? If not, roll call, Barbara.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz? Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky? Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
A second.
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Dwyer, move on with you.
All right, move to approve item agendas two through nine.
Okay, second, Nicole, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
I do. I'm concerned, huh? I'm concerned about the field trips. I don't, I love field trips. I mean, I, I'm a big proponent of kids having extended learning. But I'm a little bit worried about the environment right now and was hoping that maybe we could take a look at the field trips and, and, and not approve them because I'd hate to see parents lose money. Or are we just approving locations right now?
Yeah, so at Ed Committee, we discussed that I would, I would, I jump in a little bit and, and, you know, talk about it.
Good.
Yeah, on this agenda, what you're voting on is just the approval of locations by the Board of Ed. So that if we see an appropriate use of a trip, if we see that the world is safe and that, you know, that we are able to go ahead with these, these trips, you know, looking at it with the staff and administration, we would be able to do so having these on, having these on the, on the record. So this is not an approval for anyone to go anywhere at this point in time. It is just an approval for these locations to be okay for our staff to pursue if we, if we deem it safe and necessary for a trip.
I have one other question. On item number eight, the list of medical and clinical consultants, less stress instructional services, what is that?
So less stress is a vendor that we use for our CPR and AED training.
Oh, okay. I thought it was something you go to and, you know, if you're stressful, it'll unstress you.
It, it does have that name, so this has come up in the past, but it, it is a vendor that now I think we've used for the past two years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And any other questions? If not.
I have a question about number three, the CARES Act. Is there going to be any discussion on what that grant is going to fund? And if so, which committee would be discussing that?
We do have a list of allowable expenses. It's pretty broad. I think what we're doing tonight is just accepting the application to get the money. We could discuss this, how, what's the best way to spend it? In, in a lot of different committees, I suppose, because if we could do technology, we could do a lot of things with this money. So we can discuss it in Operations of Finance, Personnel, Education. Every committee could, in theory, discuss this issue of what's the best way to spend the money. But for right now, it really just looked to accept the grant in the amount of a quarter million dollars.
So then I just don't want to lose my opportunity to say whoever gets to discuss it in whichever committee. I've seen a lot of districts spend money on SLE after reading this month's education report. And Dan, I, I liked how you reviewed with that committee some research from Hurricane Katrina. And I really appreciated what was written in the notes. But what really, you know, will have an impression on me is the SLE and the need for counseling that will remain. And I saw that in what you said you saw in the research. So hopefully some of that money goes towards some counseling. And I just wanted to say that while we accept it. I'm gladly accept it, but I hope we talk about some counseling.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll see also on number four in education, we're accepting our ESEA money. We also have some latitude for SEL, you know, with, with Title I and Title IV.
Okay, any other questions? If not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Okay, Terry, next one, number 10.
All right, move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution. It's a HIB and it's Incident Report number two, 2020 E14 as substantiated.
I need a, I need a sec, I need a second for that?
Second.
Right? Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Onto Personnel. Mrs. Fritz?
Sure. Under Personnel, I would like to move items one through 13 on the agenda.
Okay, discussion?
I just wanted to have a brief moment to thank Debbie Costello. She's retiring. She's our first agenda motion. She dedicated a long while to the district, longtime township resident. Her own kids went to school here and she's been a valuable part of my team.
I do wish her a lot of health and happiness in her future, in her new adventure in her life.
To see us look at, I, I understand the need for the number of hours, number of days for secretaries this summer because it is a very
Something, and then Courtney.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a third thank you to Debbie for all she's done for luck and have funded.
Courtney, did you have something?
I did. I love Mrs. Costello as well and wish her all the best. But I was curious about the movement of the teachers. Is this all the teachers? Or, and if there are going to be more, have they been told yet?
This should be it. I mean, things could change. We could get a retirement. We could get something that could happen between now and the start of school. But as of right now, I think this is it. If there's any movement beyond this point, it would be, you know, very minor. We still have to appoint our, or assign our related arts teachers, music, art to specific buildings for next year. We could do that in June, but this should be the core of the transfers. You might have a special class A transfer in July if an IP would change, something along those lines. But this is the bulk of it. If there's any changes beyond this point, it would be very minimal, maybe one. But even then.
I have a question about that then, just because I'm not aware. But does the board approve within school movement? Because I know at Westbrook specifically, the two of the sixth grade teachers are going to Macapin, but one is staying. And I'm just, as a Westbrook mom, I'm just wondering where she's going and if she's been told yet. I'm just curious if the board approves things like that.
The third grade or third to fourth, that would not come across the board agenda. This is when you move in schools, we would include that in.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, Nicole, I think you had something, right? Oh, no. Okay, Kate, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to.
So I have confusion on something that I didn't have until the meeting started. And typically, right now, if we were in person, I would ask, could we table eight until after executive session? But we're supposed to exit from executive session, so I'm not really sure what to do.
Well, why don't you just answer your question? Maybe we can work through it.
Okay, um, so we deleted the asterisk. There's two dispatcher positions. Could someone explain those positions to me? Are they different? One seems now like it's a 12-month position and the other one looks like it's 210 days, although they're very similar in salary. And I, I just want to understand what that means and what they are.
So, yes, they are. And they've historically been two positions. The one has always been a 12-month position. And they're responsible, their major responsibility during the summer is to set up all of the routes for students in September. The second position used to be 190 days. And as the ESY program expanded, we needed additional days to support the ESY program because that individual, even through the school year, is there at 5:30 in the morning when the drivers are getting ready to leave. So we needed, we don't, otherwise it would be a 12-hour day. So we need two people to dovetail. One has responsibilities for ESY and for all of the athletic trips and the field trips and things like that. And that's a 210-day position. And that's expanded over the last few years simply because of the additional needs that we had in transportation. So a 12-month position is a 260-day position.
And, and anything, anything else?
Aid transfers on the June agenda, as Dr. Anamon said, just because we do have some of our programs shifting slightly. So you will see that coming up. But the board will get those names ahead of time. You'll see it on the agenda.
Does anyone else have any questions under Edu, under Personnel? Courtney, did you have something?
No, I just, I just wanted to say I only ask because I am a teacher and I feel like I just want to make sure the teachers have been told. That's all. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, we, we've been in contact with all the people on the agenda tonight. The principals will probably handle the grade to grade changes in the school within the next, within a short while, if they haven't already.
Okay. Anything else? If not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco? Do you have something? Kate, do you have something? Because I can't hear you.
I just, I find it, I'm finding that difficult. So we have one dispatcher at 210 days and another one at 260 days with a $26 difference. And I would hope that the Personnel $26 for, right, that's.
It has to do with experience also.
Okay, that's what I was missing. That's what I was asking.
The amount of time in the position.
Thank you.
Seniority.
That's what I was missing because on paper I wouldn't know that. So.
Yeah.
And I would have asked this prior, Barb. I'm sorry, but I thank you.
And as the additional days were added, that changed the salary also.
Dave, did you have something? We're not getting you, Dave.
No, I don't.
Are, are you okay?
You're frozen.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't. Nope. Nope.
All right. Can you type it into?
Dave, can you text it to somebody? Or call my phone?
I think it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I had my power one now briefly.
It was just a power outage? All right.
My, my, I think it's true, whatever it's in love with the Zoom.
Oh, okay. All right, is there any other questions? If not, I would say we call, do the roll call, Barbara.
Mrs. Fritz? Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Mr. Shinsky?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm staying on 10 and yes to everything else.
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes. Sorry, that was me. My, my microphone went crazy.
Mr. Stillman?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I'm going to abstain on 10 and yes on everything else. Operations and Finance, Mr. Guarino.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to move items one through 37.
All right, Dave, did Dave second that, I think?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any, any discussion? If not.
Is it one to what, 37?
37.
We'll do 30 separately because it's a hand carry.
But what about through 40, it goes through 41?
Yes.
Yeah, it is through, well, yeah. And then I'll say 39 through 41.
Any, any discussion? Okay, if not, roll call.
Oh, she's muted. You're muted.
I'm trying not to get feedback, you know. Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead, Ray.
Okay, I'd like to do a number 38.
I need a second.
Second.
Nicole, discussion? Did you have something, Mike? No. Okay. Any other discussion on the hand carry 38?
It's a replacement for the resolution that's on the agenda. Corrections.
If not, roll call.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Swire.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes. Okay, Ray, number 42?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to move number 42 under Operations and Finance.
Mike, second that? Any discussion on that? If not, Barb, roll call.
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yeah.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz. Mr. Ofchinsky.
Yeah.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Swire.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
And Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
I'd like to move item 43 under Operations and Finance.
I need a second. Okay, Nicole, any discussion? Barbara?
Mr. Guarino.
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky. Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Stillman.
Yes.
Mrs. Swire.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Yes.
Like to move item 44 under Operations and Finance.
Second, we need.
Second.
Hey, Terry? Any discussion? Roll call, Barbara?
Mr. Guarino.
Steve.
Mrs. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky. Mrs. Swire. Mr. Stillman. Mrs. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Conklin.
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo.
I abstain.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
I abstain also. That ends the committee reports and we'll move on to old business. Does any, does anyone have anything for old business?
Oh, I do. I do. I have.
Okay.
I have a question, Alex, about the enrollment figures that you sent out. I see that from September through April, our elementary and Macapin have gone up, but the high school has gone down. And it doesn't look like it's a P C T I issue because it looks like we took five kids back. Do you know why that trend is like that?
I'll have to look into it more, but some grades, some students move in throughout the year and some other grades, they move out for a number of reasons. Yeah, it, it, it does. It's good for us that, you know, lower grades are, we're adding students in all the grades, you know, K to A, it looks like. But I could look into that. I'm not sure why the trend. It might just be a one year outlier where a lot of the students who moved out of town just so happened to be high school age. But I can dig a little deeper if you want.
Okay, thank you. And any other old business? If not, I'll need a motion to close old business.
I move to close old business.
I'll second.
Kate, okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Is there anything under new business? Courtney, you have something for new business?
I do. I think it's new business. You know, I'm, I'm still thinking, I'm a little new to this. But I'm wondering about the CARES Act and also those title funds that we got. You know, looking at those figures, they're quite significant figures. And I'm just wondering, is there a way that the board can see how that money's being spent? You know, kind of like itemized a bit? Just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's no problem. The CARES money we hadn't spent yet, so we wouldn't have anything for that. But the title money, some of it's used to offset teacher salaries in certain buildings. Title two money, I mean, you might see some money on a board resolution which may say funded by title money. That'll give you an idea, but we can look into that. We can get some.
Yeah, they just, they just seem like big figures. So I just think, you know, breaking it down, I think would be helpful for everyone to know how the money coming into the district's being spent.
Dan, can you just briefly explain some of the positions that are offset by title money, maybe?
Yeah, so Title One is our, let me, sorry, just flipping back to that page. Title One is traditionally our largest, our largest grant. And a majority of that, of that money that we bring in is used to fund our encore teachers who are our basic skills teachers in our elementary schools. We, the district provides through local budget, a point five encore teacher at all six elementary schools. And in the title schools, we use title funding to pay for the additional point five and make that person a full time person in the, in the title schools. The Macam School is also a Title One targeted assistance school. And we offset salary for those teachers who teach our fundamentals courses there. So now that, you know, when you're looking at, at salaries and, and FICA benefits and all those types of things, the, the $331, $313,000 goes, you know, gets, gets eaten up quite, quite a bit with, with salaries. We then take that money that we have remaining and we are able to distribute it to the buildings based on need. The, the grant gives us a percentage that we have to spend in the particular buildings that, that qualify. And that is used to fund after school clubs. It, it funds our family literacy night, some of those things. A, a very large portion of that money, I anticipate, is going to, of the leftover money from after we pay salary, is going to go towards our summer reading program. So that, I have a meeting with all of those teachers on, on Thursday following our restart committee. So we're really excited for what this summer can, can, can hold for those students. And that, that is typically the largest piece of the, I guess, what I call discretionary money after we pay for the salaries of those encores, encore and fundamentals teachers.
So for the, for the CARES Act though, are, be given how that is going to be itemized for the school district?
Barbara, say that again?
The CARES Act, are we going to know how that money's being broken up for the district?
Yeah, well, we have to have those discussions to see what, what the best usage is. I mean, we referred briefly to that before. We could, you know, send it back to committee now that we've accepted the application. It's $250,000 that we have to decide how to spend because we know we're going to have, we believe we're going to have some significant state aid cuts in August, September. So on the budget that was approved last month with that state aid number, I don't believe that number is going to be the same once we get it to August, September. It's going to be lower by how much? We have no idea.
So you kind of want to wait and see what happens with that?
We can begin planning, but I think to make a decision.
I think that's fair.
Tomorrow would be hasty. We can look at where the holes are going to be.
Isn't it going to be a hard thing too? Because they're not going to say, the state is not setting their budget until the end of November, correct? Right, so I think.
But he has to have information by the end of August.
Oh, I thought it was July.
He has, he has to submit his budget to the legislature for their consideration.
Okay.
So I think he's working there. Right now, they're going to rerun the funding formula. So once they rerun the funding formula, then we'll know where our state aid is and take it from there.
Kate, you have a question?
Um, I remember, I think it was in April, Dan saying that summer literacy program was going to be opened up a little bit. That might have even been before COVID situation that we had talked about that. So Dan, would you mind talking, or if you have numbers or are there, especially now that we have been doing distance learning in the summer reading program? Will it be, it'll be online, I'm sure. And can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so we, we don't know, we don't know our participation rate at this point. We're just at the point now of, of meeting with our staff, you know, determining, you know, I don't, I'm not sure yet if all of those staff members are, are still interested in this, if it's a, if it's a distance learning, you know, sort of process. So I'm, I'm really excited to meet with that, that group of staff members on, on Thursday. I did meet with, we also use a, we have a teacher leader who, who serves, he, he supports me with a supervisory capacity. One of our teachers is a supervisor certificate, Ron Rowe. He, he helps oversee that program. So I have had a number of conversations with, with Ron and we're gearing up to put a good plan in place. So we'll. We just went back and forth today with a parent survey to go out to families to see who would be interested. We're going to be very. I guess the staff coming to the meeting on Thursday, that this is going to be a little bit different than our current distance learning criteria where this is going to be, you know, scheduled required participation by students. Where, you know, if you're going to, you're signing up for the summer reading program, then you're going to be, you know, between this time and this time, you're going to be expected to, you know, meet and have FaceTime with the teachers. You're going to be expected to, you know, do the, do this, you know, complete these tasks and then report back to your teacher and have a real detailed FaceTime experience. So we're in the planning process. I, I think it's going to be great. We just got to do a really good job of explaining to parents exactly what it's, what it is and, and how it's going to help their kids, you know, prevent this gap that we're seeing get, get wider.
So are you saying that the survey is going to go to all parents and what grades is the reading literacy?
Targeting all students and grades K through, all students who qualify in grades K through four. So when I say qualify, that is similar to how our students are eligible for our encore program in our elementary schools. So if you're, if a student is eligible to work with a reading specialist or, or work with the encore teacher based on our, our district criteria, they would be eligible for summer reading. What we've done in the past, if we have room and the students who we invite first who are eligible, don't take those spots. We then open it up again for other interested, under other interested families. This year, we anticipate being to, being able to open it up to all six elementary schools, which is what I was able to do last year. So I got approval from our county, county ed specialist last summer to go ahead and do that. And I anticipate being able to do that this year.
Anybody have any other questions? Anything else under new business?
Sorry, I have one more question. This one's for Alex or Barbara, whoever. I'm just curious about the food program. Like, how are the lunches going? Have we had a lot more people come? I just want to thank you for opening up that to our entire community. I think we've said it before, but I want to thank you again. It's amazing. And I'm just wondering how it's going. Have we, you know, how it's working?
It's going well. Meals served, meals, the number of meals served has increased dramatically. You know, we, we started talking around spring break and we noticed that the food banks were running low on food. Number of people who were hitting the food banks were, was growing, was increasing. So we decided to open up our breakfast and lunch program to the entire student population. They only come in twice a week to pick up the food. They come in, they get two days worth of meals on Monday and two day, and three days worth of meals on Wednesday. So they even save a little bit on the, on the travel time. At the end of the year, we'll have a total number of how many meals have been served or really picked up and distributed during this crisis. As food scarcity or food shortages increase, so.
Anything else on business? If not, I'm going to need a motion.
Romeo, I'd motion to close new business.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now comes the public comment portion again of the meeting. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. And then time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30 minute time period. Are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation, if appropriate, and provide your address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments maybe will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous, respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded they, that they have legal responsibility and liability for their comments. We'll give it a second and give it a few minutes for anyone if they have any comments.
No public.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you, Robert. We need a motion to close public comment.
Romeo, to close public comment.
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, we need, now we need a motion for executive session, which we're going to adjourn from. So we will not be coming back to the public portion of the meeting.
All right, I'm going to, after we vote to go into executive session, I will send another email out to the board. If you can give me about one minute to get it out to you and then it should be a, it'll be a Zoom invite.
Okay.
Alex, personal email for me because I have trouble with the school email. Okay, thank you.
Terry, you want to move the executive session, please?
Yeah, I move to go into executives. 33 for the purpose of personnel. We will adjourn from that meeting.
Okay.
You want me to read it, Linda?
Yeah, go ahead, read it, yes.
Eddie, 33, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, negotiations, HIBs and matters of returning client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
And we will be adjourning from executive session. I need a second, Terry. I'll make you the second on that. I'm sorry.
Yes, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that ends our meeting. Move on to executive session, please.